Gentlemen, it's 5:30. We're going to go ahead and begin this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for December. Welcome. Thank you all for coming here tonight. We're going to begin with the Citizens' General Discussion. Is there anybody who has any general items they'd like to bring up? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that. First item is to consider approval of minutes from November 20th, 2024. Commissioners?
Also moved.
Uh, I object, we cannot have a commissioner both present and absent at the same time. To paraphrase Fighter Sign Theater, you can't be in two places at once when you're not anywhere at all. You have Mr. Sloss in both present and absent.
Thank you, sir.
And so noted. Do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, we'll amend it to where Mr. Sloss has shown accurately.
Bonnie, you want a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes with the alteration, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Case number PP2024-005, applicant Reese Flanagan representing E wrath County Habitat for Humanity is requesting approval of a preliminary plat with simultaneous rezoning from B2 retail and commercial to R2.5 integrated housing, a property located at Zero South Drew Parcel R78511, being block 75 lot 19, and Parcel R29797, being block 75 lot 18 of the city addition to the city of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas. Mr. Kellum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the applicant is requesting approval of preliminary plat and at the same time simultaneous rezon for the property in question. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat. We've made some conditions on the approval if the commission so desires. When we do these simultaneous cases, the rezon has to be acted on first. And if the rezon is not approved, then the plat is subsequently disapproved. So this goes to council for a final decision. On the rezoning, if the rezoning is not recommended by the commission and approved by the, by the city council, then the replat would also not be approved. If that, you just want to kind of clarify that. In the packet, we do have some maps that show what we're looking at for this particular development. And again, this is from E wrath County Habitat for Humanity. We have Miss Stacy Morrison here tonight, if the board has any questions of her. But what we've been working on is there was an opportunity for part of the Bruner property to be donated to and deeded over to E wrath County. And so we've had two different plats come through. Just recently acted on a replat for Bruner properties a while back. And what we're doing tonight is taking the remainder of that portion of the property that was going to be deeded over to E wrath County Habitat and bringing that into one solid parcel. And in your packet also, you will see the site plan of what they are wanting to do. And so opportunity to bring six lots into their inventory and allow them to build six affordable housing units for the, for the community over the next few years. So on the maps, if you look at the, let's just go to page, and draw your attention to page 14, you'll see that there's an area highlighted in blue. That's already been replatted from the dealership property. The area between the blue and parcel that's labeled 801, that area is now also being deeded over to E wrath County. That will make the, the area in that square, the, the blue square move up to 801. And then that is what you're seeing on page, the site plan, plat, preliminary plat on, I believe, not the next page, but the following page. And so it's a replat as pictured on page, sorry, no, 16th, page 16. You'll see that the Bruner dealership is basically severing off the property to the west. That's becoming E wrath County Habitat for Humanity for six lots. The rezon is for only the portion that's being dedicated over to E wrath County, and it will not affect the dealership at all. So rezoned to R2.5, the R2.5 allows for a smaller lot density or a smaller lot dimension of 50 by 60. They have a Mica Drive coming in at a 40-foot right-of-way, which the city has already approved. And so with this, they will not be required to make any applications to the Board of Adjustment. It will be a straight rezon and a straight replat with the board's approval, or the commission's approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Steve?
Yes, Steve, I have a question. Looking at the plat on page 16 and looking at the blue outlined property on page 14, they seem to be somewhat different. It appears that the house at 801 on page 14 is the property just due north of the, the plat. So in other words, that blue line, that is the northern boundary on page 14, should be quite a bit closer to the 801 address. Is that correct?
Yes, that was explained during my comments. The blue outline was for the original part, uh, property that was replatted from the Bruner property.
Okay.
There's been two plats.
Okay.
Subsequent conversations, they went ahead and decided to give the remainder of that green
Okay.
property to E wrath County. And so now it will encompass that entire square.
Gotcha. So Mica Drive then was the name of that street that was pre, that was never built?
Uh, correct. It will become part of the, of the development.
Right.
Habitat will move forward.
Okay, but there's a, there's a street right-of-way that goes through there to the west of, to the west of Drew Street that has never been developed into a street, but you can tell that it's a right-of-way?
Yes, sir. That will be, become part of the development and allowed at a 40-foot right-of-way.
Okay. Will Mica Street be extended any further to the west?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak against this request? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners? Oh, um, yes, ma'am, would you, i- is there anything that you'd like to add to the, to, to anything Steve said about this development?
Just that we are so excited and blessed, and it is a Merkel, and we cannot wait to get started building affordable housing in Stevenville, Texas.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners?
Make a motion we approve with conditions.
With conditions? The conditions Steve laid out.
No condit- I don't see any conditions that are necessary.
On the plat? There's a list of conditions on the plat.
Okay. With, with, yeah, with the stated conditions, but a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of the plat and the rezon? Or do we need to vote on that separate?
Approval of the plat with simultaneous rezoning.
With simultaneous rezoning and-
To council for the simultaneous rezon.
What did he say? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're done. So that goes to City Council for the next vote. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have got. Thank you. Applicant Pat Dial representing Amnestead DQ Company, LTV, is requesting a replat of property located at 703 East South Loop, Parcel R29786, being block 75 lot 1B of the 526, uh, 52600 city addition to the city of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas. Mr. Kellum.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This coincidentally is just a little bit south of the property we spoke about there on the South Loop. This is for the new Dairy Queen site. You may have heard that they're relocating. And so this is basically just that the property does not have adequate right-of-way in place already for the, the, for the South Loop and the street to the side. And so the replat is simply to dedicate that right-of-way to the city of Stevenville. And we are asking that it be approved as a preliminary plat because we have not seen the submittals yet for the project. And so there may be additional easements that come into play as we get into the review. And so the applicant has agreed to keeping this at a preliminary plat level. We'll bring a final plat back to the commission once we wrap up.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this replat preliminary pre-lap, replat request? Anybody who wishes to speak against it? All right, closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
I recommend a council re-
But this doesn't need to go to council, right?
Doesn't have to go to council.
Okay, I recommend approval of RP 2024-005.
Second.
With?
With the conditions.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of recommending to council, or all those in favor of approving this preliminary replat, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on. All right. Case number RP 202, 2024-006, applicant Beau Mayo representing E wrath County Investment LLC is requesting a replat of properties located at 1275 North Ivy, Parcel R28919, being block 8 lot 1 and 2, W70OF1 and 2, 370 East Elm Parcel, R28920, block 8 lot 1 and 2, E701983, 14 by 60 MH Brick, TEX016453705094, 1273 Ivy Parcel, R29821, block 8, lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and MH Parcel, R78019, block 8, 20-foot alley, and Parcel R29961 of the S2400 Cage Edition, and Parcel R29961, being block 92 lot 3, EPTOF of the 2600 City Addition to the city of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas.
Good job.
Please water.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. You may recall, it's been a while back, but some of you were here then, October 19th, 2022. Planning and zoning commission by a vote of four to, four to one recommended the rezon of multiple lots to R2 for one and two family development, or from R2 to in, um, multifamily. It was actually R2 and industrial, and it was rezoned to multifamily for Mr. Mayo. Since after that, city council voted to approve the rezon, and it is now zone R3. He is asking for a replat, place all of those, uh, str, all of those parcels that you read through us now to place that into one parcel for the construction of his project. We are asking that it, again, be approved as a preliminary plat, and we will bring a final plat back once the project is wrapped up and all the public improvements are accepted. Asking for approval of preliminary plat with conditions, there's six conditions. We've been working with Mr. Mayo and his engineer on this project for a few weeks now. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Mr. Mayo, is there anything you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak for this preliminary plat request? Anybody who wishes to speak against it? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
I recommend approval of RP 2024-006 with conditions.
Second.
Brian and Nick, all those in favor of approving this preliminary replat request with conditions, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That goes forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Next up, case number RRZ2024-019, applicant Mike McCowen representing Pete Maeska, hope I didn't butcher that, and George Grissom, is requesting a rezon of property located at Zero County Road 256, Parcel R19796, being approximately 212 acres of A0342HC Hudson of the city of Stevenville, E wrath County, Texas, from AG Agricultural to R2.5 Integrated Housing. Mr. Kellum.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this, this property is, it's basically a straight rezon request, uh, looking for the R2.5. With affordable housing being such a challenge across, I guess, every state in the nation right now, uh, what R2.5 does is allow for a smaller lot dimension of 50 by 60. Doesn't mean that the developer has to build every lot to that dimension, but can certainly have the latitude to build anywhere from a 50 by 60 lot upwards. And so would allow for a smaller square footage of home as well, and, and through that, a price point that maybe more people would be able to accommodate in today's economy. So a straight rezon request for the entire 212 acres. Uh, currently, they are looking at doing all single-family construction across this project. There, we do have water and sewer in the vicinity. Uh, and basically, they can access water and sewer by right-of-way extension down Cedar Street to connect to those utilities. Uh, anticipating the question, there is some, this property does offer some drainage challenges, and there is some floodplain on the property as well. And Jeff, if you can go ahead and pull that up. We, I last minute thought that we, we might want to see this map. And so, um, when this property does begin to develop, the city and the developer will work jointly to make sure through their engineering and drainage studies that, uh, there's no impact on the adjacent properties that the water doesn't leave at a higher velocity or a higher volume than what it currently does. And so just wanted to make everyone aware that we are, we are aware as a city and the developer is aware as a property owner that there will be some, some issues to work through. We've looked at several different concepts on this. Uh, I don't know that we've actually settled on anything at this point, but we do have Mr. McConan, who is going to be the developer, and the two property owners, being Mike, he's, uh, George Grissom and Mr. Muzika. Uh, hopefully, I got that. I've heard it said a few times, well, I've never tried it. And so I've had the pleasure of working with them, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Steve?
What, what is the city's proposal for street access to this property?
So that, that is one of the things that we've been talking with these fine gentlemen about. Uh, obviously Cedar Street is a very narrow access, and we do not have the right-of-way for it all the way through. Um, so that's a great question. But if you look to the west of this, you'll see an extension of Lockhart. And Lockhart will offer an opportunity for access to this property as well. So, uh, and then we also have the Harbin Street Extension that will be a part of the future thoroughfare plan. And so we've discussed all of these access points and how to get traffic in and out of this property. And I think with that, probably the, with 212 acres, obviously that leaves room for, um, a lot of homes to be built. But at the timeline that we're looking at, I don't anticipate this being, um, a sudden construction of, you know, hundreds and hundreds of home, homes. I think we're looking at, you know, maybe 60 to 75 the first year. And certainly I can defer that question to the developer. But I don't know that we're going to see just a rapid construction of new homes in that it's more positioning for future opportunities. And that's why they're asking for the rezon request.
You mentioned Lockhart and, uh, Harbin Drive as possible thoroughfare extensions. Is there any conversations with the owners between the property and, and to those roads?
I believe you're talking about right-of-way dedication.
Yeah, for, for the right-of-ways.
And so anticipating that, you know, as I just stated, that we're not going to see just, you know, the high, high volume of homes constructed in the first year or two, we're thinking that we can serve that area with, um, right-of-way dedication. And, and this may have changed since the meetings we've had a few weeks ago. But we, we believe that with that right-of-way dedication, we can get half the dedicated right-of-way on their property and then the adjacent, uh, properties to the north as those develop, pick up the remainder of the right-of-way, still be able to serve the traffic that will come in and out of here based on, you know, the projected number of homes that will be built over the first few years. All of that to be, of course, reviewed under a TI, traffic, traffic impact analysis.
I attempted to visit this piece of property today, and I came down Lockhart, and, uh, the map on page 46 shows County Road 498 that goes to the west off of Lockhart. Lockhart ended at that point. There was no road further south at, at that point on this map, even though the road is shown on this map on page 46. So I was unable to access the property. I followed County Road 498 and came to a dead end on private property, much to the west of this piece of property.
Yeah, rather than going west, if you don't, it'd go straight right there at that gate?
You have to go through the gate.
That's where the easement's already been approved, not been approved, but okay from the landowner.
Why, why don't we do this? Why don't, um, are there any further questions for Steve? Okay, so the developers, um, I don't know, Mr. McCowen or whomever would like to come to the mic and, and just, um, let us know your plans?
We may be looking at the city line of the map as well.
Okay.
You still got the, oh, yeah. Uh, right there works this County Road 498.
Yep.
At the top.
Yep.
That, that Lockhart ends there.
Right.
And that's where Lockhart will come across and come over to our corner, right there, the blue, the light blue.
Right, right.
And that will connect and go all the way over to our property down.
And, and you've obtained that right-of-way from the-
Well, we haven't got it yet, but it's all been, or by the, by the-
I see, okay.
Yeah, okay, by the-
I was just trying to find out how it's going to be accessed.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, um, developers, do you have anything else you'd like to add? All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezon request? It looks like we, nope, that's for the next, no, this is, this is Cedar. That's not that. Oh, excuse me, I was looking at that. All right, so it looks like we have one person here who possibly wants to speak against. I don't know, Devery, Devere Hal?
Doris.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's Doris, Mrs. Hal. If you'd come to the, um, mic and give your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Doris Hal, and my husband and I, Kenneth and I, live at 1610 West Cedar. We also own 1560 West Cedar, and then we have two properties on K-Lock, 1360 and 1411. I'm sorry, thank you. 1411 K-Lock and 1360 K-Lock. We're, I'm kind of torn in the middle of this. I'm kind of not against it, but kind of for it. We're thrilled to death that it's not student housing, and we appreciate y'all's work on that before on the Zero Cedar Street. These pictures that you have here is pictures of Cedar Street. And our concern is, and I know y'all know this, this street is not designed to handle the traffic that a 212-acre development would be. The first page there has a picture of Lilian that turns into Cedar, coming and going both ways. The second page is the corner that goes directly into this property, coming and going both ways. They're both very blind corners, and it's very dangerous. There's two very active arenas that are out on County Road 256 where Cedar Street ends, that they use Cedar Street to get to. And they are pulling large horse trailers with large pickup trucks through there all the time. And, and in addition, we are thrilled that this is family. This is a family area. This is a neighborhood, and we're glad something like that's being developed. We're just asking that planning be done to handle the traffic load. And as you can see, the other two pictures are of that low-water crossing or bridge, whatever y'all want to call it. It was fixed, and we appreciate that, but this will flood again. The flooding has not been corrected. It floods every year. We've seen it over five feet across this bridge, and it, it floods two or three times every spring. And when it does- And when it does, it blocks the people that live out past this location, the ability to come into town off of Cedar Street. And the, it's just, this street is just not designed to handle the current traffic that has become out there, and that's our concern, is that, we're glad that it's going to be families. We're tickled to death with that. But the traffic, this street can't handle any more traffic. There's three bus stops on this road just to that one corner, and any more traffic would make it just that much more dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Looks like we have another, Ralph Lee?
Yes.
I'm John, your landowner.
You can state your name and address.
My name is Ralph Lee. I'm in Hamilton, Texas, P O Box twenty-four seven six seven North Nicholson Drive, and I own the fifty-five acre tract that's got the ten acre lake on it, the old Pitt-
What's next to this?
The old Pittman property. Okay. And the problem that I can see is y'all are addressing it, but how are you going to fix it? There's not enough road there for the traffic that we've got now, and if that's not addressed, there's no room for this many homes up there. I'm not concerned about being housing. I'm concerned about the traffic more than anything else, and the flooding. I happen to own the water course that floods that road there, and every time there is a new subdivision put up there, businesses on three seventy-seven, an inch of rain increases to a foot by the time it gets to my property. You're not going to create, you're not going to solve that problem easily, because there's a tremendous amount of water that comes through there. Most of the people above me can't keep the fences up. I try to keep mine up. But the two issues, the main one being the traffic, and y'all are at least talking about it, which I applaud you for that, but that's got to be solved before they put these houses in there. And it's going to take a lot of work to do it. And the bridge that she's talking about, it's definitely going to flood. They did improve it a whole lot, though. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to speak against this rezone request? And I will note that we also had one letter of opposition that, that we all have reviewed, correct? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion.
May I ask a question, Steve, first? This fix that has been done, is it to allow for the water to pass over at this low water crossing, or is it a, trying to keep the roadway open during the flood?
Well, ideally, both. I mean, it was asphalt, now concrete, so trying to, not a street builder or engineer, but I know that-
Gerald, I cannot hear you here. You can speak in my company.
So that, that was addressed through our Public Works Department, and has reviewed by Nick Williams, the Director of Public Works, and it was to be an improvement over the existing condition.
Right.
And it was gone, we went back with concrete, obviously, instead of asphalt, and I believe that is to try to improve the conditions of the water that if it, if it can channel underneath, great, but if it gets above a certain level and has to go across the roadway, that it won't necessarily wash out the asphalt onto the property to the south, which is what happened on that rain event, which was a very, I believe it was several inches of rain in about a thirty-minute span, so it was, I'm sure, not something that is uncommon for you property owners to see, but it was a very, you know, heavy, heavy rain in a short period of time, so.
Okay.
All right, commissioners.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The retention pond.
Okay, let's, let, I assume you're a retention pond for the development?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, we need a motion to discuss.
I got it. One question. Are we, are we voting to recommend to council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, I, I vote there, or motion to recommend to council to pass case R two two O two four dash O one nine.
To, you're recommending the, approve the rezone request?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we need to discuss?
I'd like to ask, ask a question of Steve, if I may.
Yep.
Can you kind of walk us through a little bit the traffic impact analysis that's going to come from this?
Yes, sir. So that, it's a requirement by the city that the engineer of record for this project would have to provide to the city, and it's a study on the number of doors and the number of trips that are anticipated to be generated through the development. They have to meet the conditions of that T I as part of the review process. And so as I mentioned earlier, I don't, I don't anticipate us seeing, you know, five hundred homes in the next year, anticipate there being kind of a buildup to that level. I, I think, and, and certainly, the developers and the property owners can speak more to their plans, but the last I heard, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, the seventy-five mark as being a pretty safe target for the first phase, and then future phases would come along as they sell those homes. One thing I didn't mention, this is also in a tourist district, and so if there's a developer agreement with the city, then funds that increase in that tourist area could be redirected to street improvements and other public improvements in the area as well. So city is aware of the concerns, we recognize the traffic challenges, we also recognize the drainage issues, which Mr. Grissom was kind of alluding to. Once we get the drainage studies and the engineering submittals, they will have to have detention mechanisms on that property to make sure that, you know, we're addressing the, the impervious drainage as the development occurs. So kind of took the liberty to go a little bit further than what you were asking, but the T I is, is going to be a requirement of the development moving forward, and it's to make sure that we can accommodate the number of rooftops that are being considered for phase one.
And is there a mechanism in place for that that says, no, we can't handle this traffic, so no, you're not going to build more than X, or?
Yes, sir. The conclusion of the T I will tell the developer and the city if, if we can proceed with phase one. And that's another thing that I probably haven't mentioned yet that I should. This is going to be built in phases, as I implied over a period of years. And so what we don't know yet is exactly where phase one is going to fall on this property, so as that is determined, we'll come back with a replat to pull that phase out. It'll be a, basically a preliminary plat showing phase one, and then as phase one is wrapped up, we'll get a final plat on phase one, and we'll come back with phase two as a preliminary plat approval. So you'll see this over and over, over the next, you know, several times over the next few years, as we position and get to the point where these developers are ready to move forward.
Any, any improvements that are to be done? Is it paid for by the city, or is it going to be paid for as a split cost?
Generally, that's, that's paid for by the developer unless, because of the tourist district, the city enters into some kind of developer agreement, which has to be approved by the city council, and the city council would authorize if there's any type of shared expenses on any improvements for the developer.
So any street improvements will be on the developer, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a general rule. Without a developer's agreement, it's one hundred percent on the developer. Yes, sir.
Will it be a T I for each phase, or is it just kind of a one-time deal?
No, sir. The, it will be T, additional TIs, and, and the developer may decide to do it all at one time, or the developer may say, well, let's just do phase one and see what the T I says, and then we'll come back for additional reviews as we move forward. That's really their prerogative, if they want to go ahead and try to encompass that study all at one time, or do it in phases, so.
We ready to vote? Dare I do this all together? All right, we'll give it a try. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezone request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All right, gentlemen, your next stop is city council. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for, those of you who spoke, for, for bringing up your concerns. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have case number P D two zero two three, two three dash zero zero one, front porch- front porch P D update. Advocate Reagan Thompson, representing TSU Catholic LLC, is providing an update to the planned development, P D, for property located at one two nine two West Washington, parcel R seven seven nine four four, being block one three four, lot twelve eighteen thirty B thirty-one, P T S O F. One three three four West Washington, parcel R three zero two four nine, being block one three four, lot forty, ATM machine. Thirteen fifty West Washington, parcel R three zero two five one, being block one three four, lot one five twenty-eight. Thirteen oh three McNeil, parcel R three zero two seven two, being block one three four, lot thirty-two. Thirteen forty-five McNeil, parcel R three zero two seven one, being block one three four, lot thirty-one, S one five zero, and thirteen fifty-three McNeil, parcel R three zero two seven zero, being block one point three four, lot thirty A of the city addition of the city of Stevensville, Erath County, Texas.
We didn't give you an easy agenda, did we? Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is a, just an annual update as required by ordinance when we approve a P D, so Mr. Reagan Thompson is here tonight. You might recall, in April of twenty twenty-three, by unanimous vote, the planned development was approved, recommended for approval, then on May second, twenty twenty-three, city council approved the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero nine, which rezoned the property from B one and B two to planned development. And so this was the front porch development, had some really impressive renderings, and Mr. Reagan Thompson is here to give you your annual update.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Or Mr. Thompson?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Killen. Very simply, we just request an extension, and we will be back in here to provide additional updates at that time.
An extension to when?
Providing updates. So by Q two of twenty twenty-five, we'll be back in here to provide additional updates on the project. Yep.
Okay, do you have any, any reasons for the delay?
There's a lot of market conditions we keep our eyes on, and we're actively watching all those, and it's synchronizing the timing sequence that we're keeping our eye on.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Thompson?
So you're saying quarter two of twenty twenty-five is what you're looking for an extension to?
Correct.
And at that time, you'll come back and present us a-
Come back in here.
Schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, commissioners, any questions?
So you don't have a start date of construction? Yeah, I mean, because it looks like y'all are ready to go.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do not need to do a public hearing for this.
Not a public hearing. It's simply, if you approve it, then it just goes on the books as a, as an extension.
It doesn't go to council.
If not, then it leaves here and goes to city council for action to reconsider.
Okay. All right, so commissioners, we need a motion. Do we need a motion?
I recommend-
Acceptance.
The acceptance of a extension to quarter two of twenty twenty-five for P D twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving this extension, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight. We appreciate your time.